I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, one God.
Right, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days, here. Councilmember Dunaway.
Oh, hey, present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tricus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 30th, 2020?
So move, Councilwoman Gray.
Second Days.
All those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. The June 30th, 2020 Journal is approved. The Journal of the Meeting of July 7th, 2020 has not yet been finalized. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Third District.
In our agenda packet last week, we had a letter signed by the interim county executive to the council with a recommendation for legislation to select a vendor for the new ethics hotline. In the letter was the following statement written by Mr. Page. As a matter of full disclosure, I should inform you that one member of the council inquired about the RFP on multiple occasions by reaching out to procurement staff directly. At least one of these communications, if not more, occurred during the cone of silence period, which is still ongoing. It was unknown whether those communications were intended to manipulate or direct the procurement process in favor of a particular service provider. Members of the council, I'd like to tell you that I am the council member Mr. Page is referring to. In today's agenda communication, I've included every conversation I had in a series of five emails between Director of Administration Todd Martin, Deputy Director Jennifer Keating, and me. Anyone can clearly read the emails and see that I was getting impatient with the many months of delays from the Department of Administration to implement the ethics hotline. This council passed this bill nearly one year ago, and we still don't have an ethics hotline up and running, despite Mr. Page telling the media last year that this legislation would create a zero tolerance policy for corruption in county government. The cone of silence ordinance does not prohibit an elected council member from asking a department head for the status of a project required to be implemented.
Councilmember, we were able to read a lot of this in your communication. Can you proceed with your motion, please?
It's almost over. It prohibits county contractors from contacting county employees during the bidding process. Mr. Page knows that. He signed this bill into law. As I said in my letter to the county council in lieu of investigation, which she tells me she will do, which will undoubtedly cost many thousands of taxpayer dollars, I will accept a written apology from Mr. Page for making an allegation he knows for a fact to be untrue. I hope Mr. Page addresses this issue in his public comments tonight. He owes the taxpayers an explanation as to why he made such a statement to this council. With that, Madam Chair, I would ask that the communications be received, filed, and forwarded to the county council for further action.
Councilman Fitch, I do think an interesting question is raised about whether or not perhaps the spirit of this ordinance was violated. I understand that you did disclose your communication, but it appears that it was several months after the fact. And again, I guess there is a policy question at hand about whether or not the spirit of the law was violated by that. But that is a question for another day, so, so ordered.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Tricus.
Yeah, I just want to lay in just briefly, because I guess my sense of that ordinance is that once the communication has been disclosed, and it has in this case, I don't see necessarily the value in an investigation. I think it's not a valuable use of taxpayer money, frankly. Councilman Fitch has disclosed his communication. I think that's what the ordinance is designed to, in fact, states. So I don't see any point in the investigation. I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you. That's all I have.
Item number three.
I tend to agree, yeah. Go ahead. Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four, Second District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Second Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, First District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor for review and response, please.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Under Other Communications, item number one, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, the Assessor's Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number two, Sixth District.
File, and the acting administrative director be directed to schedule a public hearing on the 325 Butler Hill Road, Community Improvement District, proposed in the petition no later than 45 days from this date in accordance with the Community Improvement District Act.
So ordered.
Thank you.
Item number three.
So this request and the following request are both related to conducting and updating important data collection related to disparities in county contracting. This is a very important issue. It's a priority right now, and we want to make sure that we proceed in the correct manner for this. I have had conversations this afternoon, both with Ms. Erby and with Councilwoman Days about this issue, and we agreed to hold both of these on the order of business so that we can have some questions answered that this raises, such as, is it possible potentially to use CARES Act as a source of funds for these projects? And also, what is the role of procurement moving forward with procuring these studies? So we will be holding these tonight so that we have some time to have some dialogue and answer these questions. So receive, file, and hold on the order of business, same as item number four. And that will be the order. Thank you. That brings us to the report of the county executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. As COVID-19 cases continue to rise across the country, it's imperative that we do all that we can to help curb the virus. Face coverings are mandated in St. Louis County, and a public health order was put into place to ensure that our businesses could continue with their reopening plans, and that employees and customers would be safe. The community has shown tremendous support for requiring masks. People want to feel safe when they are at work, shopping, and dining out. The overwhelming majority of people understand that masks help keep us safe and those around us safe. But we also know that not everyone is adhering to our public health order and guidance. We have received more than 200 complaints since our mask mandate went into effect on July 3rd. Most of the complaints were about businesses that weren't fully masked. Of concern were those businesses were allowing patrons to be in their business without a mask. Some of their complaints were on lack of social distancing and the not following cleaning protocols in these businesses. Our health department staff reviews each complaint and reminds businesses about the mask mandate and the guidelines they should follow to ensure that their business can operate safely for their employees and their customers. Our priority is helping businesses stay in business, and often, all they need is a reminder of what is required to operate safely. Customers feel that unsafe in a business will not go back. That is an effective mechanism for ensuring that mask mandate is followed. As a reminder, here are some things to know about the face covering requirement. You are not allowed to go into a business or use public transportation if you're not wearing a face mask. You must wear a mask when seated in an indoor or outdoor restaurant or bar, except while eating and drinking. And that includes entering and exiting the business and trips to the restroom. You must wear a mask when working in a job where you interact with others. You must also wear a mask if going to someone else's home to provide a service, such as cleaning, maintenance, or repair. You must wear a mask outside if you're not able to maintain a distance of six feet from others who are not members of your household. Here are some instances where face coverings are not required. When you're at home, when you're working alone in a private office or an enclosed space, as long as you put on a face covering when someone else enters, or in your car alone, accompanied by people you live with. You should still have a face covering with you at all times when you're not home. There might be times when you cannot avoid being around other people. Children under two years old must not wear a face covering. There is a risk of suffocation. It is recommended that children ages three to nine wear a face covering, but only while supervised by an adult. There are also some exceptions for those with various health conditions. Please visit sdlcorona.com and click on reopening guidelines to learn more about face coverings. Across the country, we have seen a number of COVID-19 cases rise, driven more by testing and more and more by people out and about. With more positive cases, our need has grown for more contact tracing. We have 200 volunteers and 60 hired contact tracers, and continue hiring more. Contact tracing is an essential part of curbing this virus. Here's a story I shared at my media briefing yesterday. Through contact tracing, 12 cases came back to one spot, the break room of a manufacturing plant in St. Louis County. The company in St. Louis County had begun requiring masks for their employees before they were mandated. They rearranged their workspaces to be a safe distance apart, and the company worked diligently to protect from an outbreak. So you can imagine how surprised they were when employees started turning up positive. Linking the cases was not easy. The employees live in four counties across two states, but as contact tracers put the pieces together, working with health departments in other counties, they determined that all the positive cases that were employed at the same company, who all took the same lunch break in the same time in the same space. And it was in that space where masks were not worn and social distancing was not strictly followed. As more people are heading back to their workplaces, we must keep in mind that no part of a building is free from the spread of the virus. The number of people in a break room or kitchen should be minimal, stagger lunch breaks. Break rooms are filled with high-touch areas such as refrigerators, microwaves, sinks, and coffee makers. Don't let up on being cautious and responsible. I know it's easy to laugh, but as long as a virus is present in our community, we cannot let down our guard. Our fight against the virus is staying a safe distance away from others, wearing masks except when eating or drinking, and constantly cleaning common areas. And of course, wash your hands frequently. Aggressive contact tracing has proven an integral part of slowing this virus. It's what has allowed us to slowly reopen. Contact tracing is how we're going to get through this. If you receive a call from the health department and you may have been exposed, please return the call. Please cooperate. Please help us protect others. Your assistance could save a life. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. We will now proceed with the report of special committees.
Madam Chair, our first report this evening is from Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures from the meeting held on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020.
Receive, file, and the report dated July 7th, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second report this evening from the committee of the whole is not yet complete.
Yes, so we will hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Moving on to public forum tonight. Just to remind everyone of the procedure for public forum, we are very proud of our public forum here in the St. Louis County Council, and we know that this can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in the community. So with that, we encourage every participant in our public forum to speak with respect and tolerance towards each other, towards council members, and towards other officials in county government. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlewisco.com. On the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour prior to the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name. The email must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is our standard for in-person council meetings. And the administrative director or designee will read the comments out loud during the meeting, and they will be recorded into the journal. So with that, Madam Clerk, please proceed with the first speaker.
Madam Chair, we have 27 written public comments this evening. Our first public comment is from Shannon McCullough. "I want to share a story of what your unfair, unscientific, unconstitutional mandate about masks is creating. I drove my husband's car to the grocery store last week because there were workers at our house that had my car blocked in. I couldn't find a mask in the car, but decided I'd just be in the store a few minutes, and I'd keep my distance from others. I wasn't sick. Besides, I'd walked into this same grocery store just the week before without a mask because for the last couple of months, masks weren't needed. Masks weren't necessary for all the protesters. I was standing at the meat counter at Schnucks, and a woman walks by, stops about 10 feet from me, points at me, and says very loudly, 'You are not wearing a mask.' It didn't matter what I said in response. She kept saying, 'Get a mask. Shame on you. Get out of this store.' Do you want to know how that made me feel? People are turning on each other. I've heard many stories similar to this from friends and acquaintances. How are we ever going to come together as a community, as a nation, if we have people tattling on and shaming each other? I can't help but think of World War II and Nazi Germany. People turning on their neighbors, telling an authority figure, 'She's a Jew.' Definition of tyranny: cruel, unreasonable, or arbitrary use of power or control. Definition of leadership: the art of motivating a group of people to act toward achieving a common goal. Definition of freedom: a condition in which people have the opportunity to speak, act, and pursue happiness without unnecessary external restrictions. St. Louis County Council, it is time to show some leadership. It is time to allow us the freedoms granted to us in our nation's constitution. It is time to end your tyrannical mandates. Continuing to be on my knees in prayer." Next comment from Jeff Lowery. "I live immediately to the north of the above-mentioned property, which is 7190 Christopher Drive. As you are well aware, over the past 10 to 12 weeks or so, my neighbors and I have been writing in every week requesting that the original decision to allow a medical treatment facility by the name of Montinito Corporation to be allowed to move into our residential neighborhood be overturned. It is our understanding that the first step in that process has been taken, and that the review of the actions of the county planning department by county councillor Beth Orwick is complete, and that the original decision to approve this proposed development has been reversed. I was very pleased, to say the least, to learn of this decision. I believe this whole review process, findings and decisions, is a good example of our local government not only hearing, but actually listening to the citizens who it represents and whose interests in it responsible to help protect. It is responsible to protect. I and the residents that live on Christopher Drive would like to thank county executive Dr. Sam Page for authorizing the review, and county councillor Beth Orwick for conducting a detailed and comprehensive review and analysis, and the objective findings and decision that now require a public hearing before the planning commission. We all look forward to that day, and in the meantime, we now feel better about the fact that our government listened to us and is trying to help us." Next comment is from Anna Crafton. "Dr. Sam Page, thank you for cleaning up the corruption left by Steve Stinger by saying no to Montinito." Next comment is from Josh and Kara Shear. "The county residents are done with these ludicrous, unconstitutional Corona mandates. Math is easy. More testing equals more positive cases, but decreased deaths. It's over. It's no longer a pandemic, and the county should go back to work on other more important issues for the county, like prorating everyone's property tax, since we aren't receiving the services and/or luxuries for which we have paid. The lack of pushback from the council towards Sam Page is despicable. You should all be ashamed of yourself. You're supposed to look out for the betterment of the county, but you all, with the exception of a few of you, have only been looking out for your power-hungry selves. Makes a lot of us wonder if Kim Gardner isn't the only one backed by George Soros. We are done. Open up the entire county, parks, playgrounds, schools, everything, and end this stupid, unconstitutional mask mandate." Next comment is from Janice Jones. "I have two issues I would like addressed. One, one of the reasons I purchased my home is because it looks over beautiful land that we find tranquil. Yet my neighbor has planted bamboo shoots, which has blocked our view. We can't see anything because of the height in which they grow. I would love to see some regulations put in place in the height of planted plants. I brought this issue to the attention of Rochelle Gray's office, and Tony Weaver just informed me of the policy, which I informed him at the inception of our conversation because I had already reported this problem to Public Works." Number two, 63138 has one of the highest numbers of COVID-19. Why weren't we provided mobile testing sites? Everyone weren't aware or have transportation to get to Christian Northeast, and why weren't we informed about benefits that we were eligible for just for living in this area due to the COVID?
Continue, excuse me, continuing comments from Linda Krenning. "I'm writing the council about 7190 Christopher Avenue. I've expressed my feelings. How the decision to let 7190 Christopher Avenue become a medical treatment center would change my life and all the residents of Christopher Drive. Every time I think about all the changes this will bring, traffic, lighting, noise, and all the different trades to this two-lane street, this area will never be the same. I am hopeful that you are looking at this and giving it the consideration it deserves. All I wanted was for you to put yourself in our place and realize how this decision would change the area and our lives forever. Thank you for being there for your St. Louis County residents, Linda Krenning." Comment from Amy Eichmann. "Dear Dr. Page and council. Dr. Page has indicated that the health policy will be driven by data and science. Please provide responses to the following questions specific to Missouri COVID-19. I feel it is important for the county to be transparent, and I'm not getting any answers. The task force has not returned my email. Number one. Could one person be counted as a new case more than once in the reported cases' data? If so, please explain how such scenarios might occur. Number two. Are persons who have been quarantined as a result of contact tracing ever counted as new cases without ever actually being tested? Number three. Have problems occurred with the tests themselves, for example, contamination or false positives? And how are these problems tracked and reported to the public? Number four. Is the COVID-19 test really capable of detecting a virus? I'm hearing that PCR should never be used as a tool in diagnosis of infectious diseases. It was meant only to be as, excuse me, it was only meant to be used only as a research tool. How are mental health issues related to COVID-19 isolation being tracked, and are we seeing an increase in suicides, depression, et cetera? Number six. How many, excuse me, how many hospitalizations are now due to delayed treatment or delayed diagnosis of serious illness over the past three months? Number seven. Please provide specific data driving the mask mandate in St. Louis County. I would hope that you have something more compelling than computer models that rely on bad data. Number eight. What research regarding the potential health risks associated with mask use has been reviewed, and what drove the decision to disregard it? For example, warnings exist on mask packaging and product inserts, in addition to the voluminous, longstanding scientific literature advising against widespread masking of the healthy. Number nine. Disclose any communication slash coordination on the mask mandate from inside and outside the county, and any incentives offered, financial or otherwise, from any sources to advance it. It seems odd that these mandates are appearing simultaneously all over the country at a time when many are already wearing masks and deaths are far below the peak. Number 10. How are the results of the mask mandate being tracked and reported? What will the measure of its success or failure, and what is the anticipated duration of this unprecedented experiment? Lastly, I favor monitoring of volunteers' finances as they have access to or receive public funding. That particular money should be followed. This is how this was not a given, shaking my head. Thank you. The following from Ron Krenning. "I'm writing this about 7190 Christopher. I am continuing in the effort to stop the so-called group home on 7190 Christopher. I appreciate the time and attention you are giving this problem that will change our lives and neighborhood. I have lived in this neighborhood for 42 years, and I am thankful you are looking into this proposal. I only hope you realize how this will affect our living conditions in this neighborhood forever." The following from Stacy Washington. "Dear, excuse me, dear interim executive Page and the St. Louis County Council. KSDK wrote an article about the various ways we can report on businesses that aren't fully executing their duty to act as your mask enforcement arm. This is shameful and divisive. We are a community, and part of that is respecting differences. Instead of angrily attempting to force citizens into becoming your unpaid spies, how about exercising some understanding on why some people aren't wearing masks? They may have asthma or COPD, be suffering from claustrophobia, or they might understand that since Dr. Fauci told us back in February that masks don't work, this whole exercise is unnecessary. We were told that once we flattened the curve, we could return to life as normal. Now it appears you want to force us to wear masks until a vaccine is rushed into completion. What about those who don't wish to be vaccinated? What do you plan to do to them, Dr. Page? What about herd immunity? An increase in cases due in part to an increase in testing availability and more young people contracting COVID-19 helps us get to herd immunity. Hospitalizations are down, and deaths are down, which is good news. Yet you continue to fear monger. God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of peace, love, and a sound mind. The fact that this council continues to crush small businesses and limit church attendance with these draconian policies points to a political motivation." Which is, again, Dr. Page, utterly shameful. Best, Stacy Washington. The following from Stephanie Michael. "Dr. Page, I am a homeowner in the Robinwood West Community Improvement District. As I'm sure you know, a CID is not a municipality. We have a pool. I am concerned about the ability of your county inspectors to inspect our pool in accordance with your county-wide COVID-19 public water recreational facilities guidelines. In fact, in an email today from the Robinwood West CID president, the district president alludes that the pool management company the district has contracted with has worked some agreement with the county that allows our pool to have outdoor pool furnishings that are not sanitized except at opening and closing. That allows no markings for social distancing, and that allows no directional markings around the pool. I must believe this agreement with the county to be true as our pool has passed several county inspections. Dr. Page, I went to a couple of your county pools. The staff was professional, knowledgeable on COVID requirements, friendly. The pools looked beautiful, and in your COVID-19 guidelines were enacted for social distancing, directional arrows around the pool, and no pool furnishings. So, this situation leaves me very confused about the standards of your county inspectors and the ability for pool operators to make agreements," end quotes, "outside of your documented COVID-19 guidance for public pools. Why are your county pools held to your COVID-19 standards, yet pools in the county are not held to these same guidelines? Why is the health of well-being of patrons of your county pools more important than the health and well-being of patrons of my district pool? Aren't all of us in the county required to comply with your published COVID-19 guidance? In 2011, I asked Mr. Charlie Dooley basically the same question." In 2011, I asked Mr. Charlie Dooley basically the same question. There was no pandemic in 2012. Dr. Page, I will end this in the same manner I ended a letter to Mr. Dooley. Injury, illness, or accident, the property owners of Robinwood West will not be the, will not be the only one named in a lawsuit. The county will also be named. Stephanie Michael.
Continuing with the public comments. Comment from Diane Unger. The frustration continues. The absurdity of this whole mask thing continues. The loss of revenue because now we are supposed to snitch on businesses continues. The incompetence continues. And the sad thing is, I almost have to make an appointment just to go to my church to pray that one day you all might see the light. Beyond all of the COVID mess, this evening I'm questioning something I heard at the last council meeting. Delmar Gardens evidently wants to infringe upon a very nice neighborhood. I have no iron in this fire, but I feel so sorry for those in the Arlington-Glen subdivision who do. Councilman Fish methodically stated his opposition to the Delmar Gardens expansion. It was concise and well thought out. Unfortunately, not all council members have the same integrity or thought process. Councilwoman Gray, I do not know you and I mean no disrespect to you, but your comments last week before the vote raised concern. You admitted that you were not aware the Delmar Gardens CUP issue was up for vote that evening. You stated that you hadn't read all of it and you might want to talk to some folks. If I remember correctly, Councilman Fitch interrupted to give you some leadway to, to perhaps make yourself more familiar with the issue before you cast your vote. However, you voted with the squad. Surely you know there is no shame in asking for more time to study an issue. Surely you know that would have been the prudent thing to do. As I said, I have no iron in this Delmar Gardens fire. However, all county residents deserve to be treated equally when it comes to decision-making votes from this council. I would earnestly hope that in the future, any votes from the council members be withheld until they feel very comfortable and knowledgeable about the details of what they are voting on. Following the pack is usually not the best path to take. Questions lead to knowledge. Integrity has no boundaries. Next comment from Paula Coughlin. I was surprised to hear this week that Sam Page does not consider his position as interim county executive a full-time job. I think your constituents should know that while the county has been suffering from economic devastation and high unemployment due to your COVID-19 shutdowns and from rioting, rising crime, and destruction resulting from the supposedly peaceful protests, Sam Page has been working his regular job as an anesthesiologist two days a week at a hospital, only for non-COVID-19 patients, of course. Doesn't all your mandating of mask-wearing and social distancing, your issuing of unconstitutional cease and desist orders, your fiend efforts to distribute the Federal CARES Act fund in a way to help our businesses and stimulate our economy, and your passage of edicts without proper consideration and oversight due to your Democrat majority in the council keep you busy enough? I am quite sure that when the voters elected you as county executive, they expected you to be dedicated to St. Louis County matters and to serve them full-time. Oh, wait, no one elected you to be county executive. Also, I am hearing plots of other municipalities and counties across the country to raise property taxes by 30% to 35% to cover their COVID-19 expenditures. Do not get any ideas about raising property taxes here after you have passed mandate after mandate that have reduced the value of our property. You have ruined our economy. You have driven businesses to surrounding counties. You have caused high unemployment. You have restricted or eliminated every civil liberty and freedom granted to us by the Constitution while turning a blind eye and remaining silent on the criminal behavior of protesters. Who would want to move or bring a business to St. Louis County now? No one, and we have you and your incompetence to thank for that. Next comment from Christina Lowry. For the past four months, I along with the residents of Christopher Drive has submitted comments before the council in regards to the so-called group home proposed by Montinito at 7190 Christopher Drive. We are thankful to learn that the review by Ms. Beth Orwick is complete and the original decision as to Montinito being a group home has been reversed. I personally want to thank Dr. Page for authorizing the review and for Ms. Beth Orwick for conducting a thorough and comprehensive analysis of what Montinito is, a medical treatment facility. I look forward to presenting our case at the public hearing before the planning commission. Next comment from Greg Porter. I live in unincorporated North St. Louis County in Council District Four. I am the president and secretary of the Paddock Forest Residents Association, Inc., and the chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee. My comments are not representative of either organization. I have refrained from sending my comments via email in hope of the return of in-person council meetings. However, since Councilman Mark Harder never received an answer from the council chair with regard to when in-person council meetings would resume, it is apparent that it is not likely to happen until after the August primary election. This may be due in part to safety precautions, but the obvious reason is to enhance the political advantage of the interim county executive in the upcoming primary election. It's interesting how things can change in just a couple of years. Two years ago, Sam Page was council chair and Hazel Erby was vice chair. Page, Erby, councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray, and former county executive Charlie Dooley all supported Montevani and his bid to upseat Stinger, which he almost did. Perhaps this will be his year. Today, Sam Page is the interim county executive, Hazel Erby works in his administration as a director, and Walton Gray and Dooley are all behind Page. Anyone with any common sense can see what is going on here. Dr. Sam Page, as he now refers to himself since the COVID-19 pandemic, offered Erby a high-level job in his administration to dissuade her from political opposition and pandered to Walton Gray since he knows that she is his ticket to helping secure the primarily black vote in North County, which is needed in order to win the primary. Otherwise, I doubt that he would have anything to do with North County. The important point here is that Sam Page cares about Sam Page and he will do whatever is necessary to get what he wants. Hopefully, the residents of St. Louis County are paying attention and will show up to vote on August 4th to oust Dr. Sam Page and send him back to the anesthesia department. Next comment is from William Pyatt. For weeks, the residents of Oakville near 7190 Christopher Drive have been imploring you to reconsider the decision to allow the California-based company, Montinito, to put a for-profit medical facility in our quiet residential neighborhood. From the onset, it seemed beyond belief that it could ever happen, and yet there were the trucks and vans in the driveway getting bids together to change the home into a business and ready it for the foot traffic of numerous employees and delivery workers and the vehicle traffic, including a huge parking lot right in the front yard on Christopher Drive. We mention these points plus the almost certain reduction of the value of our homes. We invited you to come to our neighborhood and see what you thought firsthand. Maybe you did, and if so, thank you for your time. And sometimes we were passionate, but hopefully you can understand considering the threat of encroachment from an out-of-state entity being allowed to put a business for all intents and purposes in our backyards and front yards for some. So all that being said, it is only fair to say how sincerely thankful we are that you have taken us into consideration and decided what Montinito submitted and received approval for is not what was really going to be allowed. We realize we still have further business in this process to ensure this entity is not allowed in our neighborhood, and we will respectfully continue to lobby for our cause. But it is 100% appropriate that we thank you sincerely for taking the time and having the open mind to reconsider this situation and give us another day to work toward maintaining the nature of the neighborhood we bought into with the confidence we could expect to remain intact. Quiet and residential, not commercialized and compromised.
Following comment from Diane Clark. Dear interim county executive Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council. I'll have to agree with what Governor Parsons said over the weekend, end quote, "If you want to wear a dang mask, wear a mask. If you don't need the government to tell you to wear a dang mask," end quote. Please don't make it mandatory to wear a mask in public places, and please stop encouraging people to snitch on their friends and members of our community. This is reminiscent of a tactic used by the Gestapo. We have, we have enough division in out, I'm sorry, I'm, we have enough division in our community as it is. Sincerely, Diane Clark. Following comment from Kate Stratton. It is so hard to continually listen to the same thing coming out of interim county executive Page's mouth, press conference after press conference and the county council meeting after, after county council meeting. We all hear from you is wear face masks or face masks with no real scientific data or randomized controlled trial studies to show that face masks prevent the spread and protects the wearer of these masks from viruses. We need herd immunity. Get rid of the fear mongering and face mandate, mask mandates, and let the people who want to wear them, wear them. Now we have Dr. Page encouraging St. Louisans to report on businesses that do not abide his mask regulations. It's unconscionable. You are telling us to turn on each, on each other over technically unenforceable mask mandates. It's also unconstitutional. If wearing masks and social distancing are so effective, then why isn't the county open 100%? Why isn't the county council meeting in person again? Why are all these issues brought up by citizens week after week and never addressed by interim Page or any of the Democrat, any of the Democrats on the county council since you are in control? Listening to the Democrats on this council last week was one of the hardest things I had to do. Voting on the Delmar Garden expansion before you even listen to the people who live in the Arlington-Glen subdivision just so, just shows how incompetent the Democrats on this council really are. Could you expl, could you please explain who the secret volunteers are in giving advice on the CARES money to Sam Page? That was very confusing and hard to follow last week. The transparency that was promised after the former county executive was arrested and put in prison. And we're missing some words here. I don't think things have changed much, just a continuation of different lies and more corruption. Praying that these things change, but I'm losing hope. Kate Stratton. Excuse me. The following from Deb Matush. Executive Page and council members. There was once an executive named Page who thought himself quite sage. As for business, he knew not. It seems like he forgot the people his salary paid. And then there is Chairman Clancy, who sees herself as quite fancy, but the people can see when she's pressed just a wee, she seems to get quite antsy. While the two of them tasked all the people with masks, they began to lead people into the weeds like great political hacks. As decisions are made and the plans are laid, hey, council, where are you? What should you, what should you do? The citizens are being played. Now the people grow weary and become more leery because what they need are those willing to lead. When you stand, we will be cheering. Right now, I'm cheering St. Charles County, Jefferson County, and St. Clair County for their efforts to represent their citizens without causing fearing and anxiety. Masks are for the ill, not the healthy. They trust their citizens to use common sense in regards to masks. No fear or tattlers. I shopped Jefferson County twice since last Tuesday. Tally, Jefferson County, $553 with $42 in taxes. St. Louis County, $36 with $1 in taxes. I will continue to shop where I am trusted, as will some of my friends. One more thing. Your business prowess is woefully lacking, Mr. Page. I hope you are a better anesthesiologist. As for you, Ms. Clancy, I have no words. Deb Matush. Following from Terry Deloche. Dear council, why are you spending only 14% of the CARES money according to your website on the St. Louis County economy? Do you realize because of your fearful and strict regulations, businesses are failing? I'm so disappointed that you are not humane enough to listen to the requests of people that you, of the people that you get every week through emails. Aren't you all in an elected position and are supposed to be representing the people? It is time for you all to start leading this county with hope and not fear and intimidation in hopes that you will all put on your listening ears. Terry Deloche. The following from Tom Sullivan. I have several things to mention. Number one, on June 2nd, I asked council chairwoman Lisa Clancy if she could provide answers as to the status of the $15.3 million the council approved as front money on the $240 million that the county is to give toward the $480 million total cost of the convention center expansion. I'm still waiting on a response. Number two, tomorrow will be one year from when county executive Sam Page attended a town hall meeting in North County with councilwoman Walton Gray. Residents wanted to know when something would be done about the old Jamestown Mall. They also wanted to know what the county would do about the grocery store deserts that were created when Shop &amp; Save closed its stores. It's nearly a year later and there has been no progress. Number three, there are still questions about the food contract for the county jail and how it came about that Trinity Services Group was selected. There are several things that don't add up. The council did not get all the answers before going ahead with the contract. Number four, St. Louis County Police Board member Dr. LJ Punch was the only board member that voted against the contrived police department review pushed on by the, pushed on the board by county executive Page. The review has more to do with politics than anything else. Dr. Punch should be commended for upholding the integrity of the board. Too bad she was the only one. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Continuing with the council comments from Judy Clark. Thank you, Beth Orwick, for taking a closer look at the gypsies, tramps, and thieves that are Montinito. They are not a group home. They are an outpatient treatment facility that has no business in our county neighborhoods. Please do the right thing and make the monster go away. Next comment from Kurt Van Hoogstraite. I am watching with great interest how our county council and Dr. Page deal with our freedoms and rights as United States citizens. We are faced with being leaders of freedom or leaders of oppression. We can force people to wear masks and create some kind of snitch environment if we are cowards, or we can let people make their own decisions and be left to their consequences. I prefer freedom and choice. People can wear face masks if they choose, but I should not be forced to against my will out in public, especially when outdoors. We should not even consider another citywide shutdown. If we truly believe things are getting worse, then we need lightly-applied step-down processes, but certainly not ever again a shutdown of everything. That is slow death that will actually kill a lot of people. While everything wasn't actually shut down, it showed an obvious element of hypocrisy. Thus far, I'm looking to be proud of how you deal with situation, not criticize. Please choose and side with freedom. I choose freedom over oppression. To the rest of you that choose oppression, stay home if you truly fear for your life and welfare. Lastly, any support of the idea of defunding the police on any scale will be met with extreme disappointment in my full effort to fight it with all my energy. Next comment from Valerie Lawrence. I am writing because I am against mandatory masks. It should be an option if people want to wear them. Here is an article that proves masks are not effective, and she provides a website. So in summary, I am opposed to mandatory masks. Next comment from Rachel Williams. I would love to see North St. Louis County have a designated day where residents can put out any item or items they want for trash pickup. University City offers this a few times annually, and you tend not see a collection of unwanted items and garbage cluttering their property. I have no, I have known people that live on McKnight and they partake in this often. This would be a great way for St. Louis County to spend funds that all residents are likely to find useful. Of course, you may have to add some guidelines for pickup, but the overall, this would be a wonderful way to get rid of unwanted items and contribute to an effort to clean up our Next comment from Eric Reynolds. Thank you for the opportunity to comment concerning the St. Louis County's Public Health Department's mandatory mask order. I believe this order is severely negligent as it relates I believe this order is severely negligent as it relates to actual scientific support concerning viability of consumer available mask wearing and its supposed role in preventing the transmission of COVID-19, or any virus for that matter. No scientifically coordinated, double-blind, peer-reviewed research is available to support this mandate. In a sincere scientific forum, anything else is deemed anecdotal. The county health department cannot simply lazily refer to significant scientific studies in a mandate that restricts citizen movement, rights, and behaviors. Furthermore, I find it despicable that the county executive Page, an elected official and physician himself, would allow such an evidence unsupported action to occur in the first place. What scientific studies? Please publicly post a credible, double-blind, peer-reviewed shred of evidence that consumer available masks actually stopped the spread of COVID-19. I believe your mask mandate has no scientific foundation to support it. Furthermore, it sets a dangerous precedent for the future. The next time we hit the flu season, will all the citizens of St. Louis County have a zero choice but to obey another mandate from the county health department requiring masks be worn at all times in public based off of unnamed scientific studies? Worse even yet, an indefinite mandate just like the one we are under right now? Will county executive Page have the time or courage to compel a department for which he is the executive to actually produce genuine scientific evidence of such a need for said mandate? If individuals want to wear masks in an effort to protect themselves, then it is absolutely their right to do so. Conversely, to not wear a mask is a right that cannot be stripped by reckless mandates.
Madam Chair, continuing. Following from Richard and Kathy Ellis. Excuse me. Dear county executive Sam Page, county councillor Beth Orwick, and the county council. We'd like to thank everyone for your consideration and review to conclude that a conditional use permit be required for Montenegro to conduct their business as a residential treatment center at the home on Christopher Drive. We look forward to the opportunity now to have our concerns be heard before the planning commission. Thank you for listening. Only comment from Stephen De Prowe to the county council members and county executive. Thank you to each of you for your leadership and perseverance through these trying times. It's difficult enough to hold those leadership positions and make tough decisions during simpler times, so to continue to hold fast at this time deserves recognition. There is no such thing as a flawless leader, and no matter the decisions made, there will always be other leaders and residents who disagree. As you all very well know, even if it's in the back of your mind, had Dr. Page not imposed restrictions and even more countyans had taken ill or worse passed away, criticism and political attacks would have still been just as negative or possibly more so. Also, maybe someone can tell those unhappy citizens who say they're taking their business to other counties because they're upset with what's going on here, that they're still only hurting St. Louis County's economy by doing so. While I'm not a fan of government overstep, I have mixed feelings about the so-called mask mandate, and I understand both sides of the argument. Not to mention, I serve my country with the idea that citizens are entitled to all different opinions and beliefs. Regardless of my stance, and really regardless of my councilman's stance here in District 7, I find it very disheartening that he would take the social media to insult those who opt to wear a mask during these times. Again, I understand if he is against masks, but as a community leader, your job is not to perpetuate the belief that those who choose otherwise are nuts or stupid or following mindlessly. You see, even before COVID, my family and I made the informed decision to wear masks on occasion to protect my wife during certain stages of chemo. And we continue to make that informed decision now to protect her and others who are vulnerable. So I ask you, someone who claims to be pro-life, quit spreading negativity about those who are also attempting to save lives of their loved ones and their fellow community members. You've taken the role of a community leader, and people watch and listen to what you say and do. Be mindful of that. Thank you. Madam Chair, that completes the citizen comment.
Thank you. We'll move on to introduction of bills.
Bill number 153, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and two renewals with Comp Psych Employee Assistance Programs, Inc. for employee assistance program services. Bill number 154, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with one renewal and one renewal with Southwest Call Center, Inc. for procurement ethics hotline services. Bill number 155, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,436 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Annie E. Casey Foundation appropriating additional grant funds for support of the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Program of the Family Court. Bill number 156, introduced by councilmembers Days, Dunaway, Walton Gray, Tracus, and Fitch for Harder. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with EDM Incorporated for consulting architectural and engineering services in connection with the Department of Parks and Recreation's 2020 Parks Projects Engineering Design Services Package. Bill number 157, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Tracus. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Adolino Winters Hubner, Inc. for consulting architectural and engineering services in connection with the Department of Parks and Recreation's 2020 Parks Comfort Station Design Package. Bill number 158, introduced by councilmember Walton Gray. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $250,000 from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources appropriate same for support of the Spanish Lake Park Neighborhood Trail Connections Project and authorizing the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute necessary documents. Bill number 159, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $399,707 from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance appropriating the same for support of costs incurred by the police department as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 160, introduced by councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with EFK Moan LLC for consulting engineering services in connection with resurfacing and ADA compliance improvements on North Elizabeth Avenue from Chambers Road to Pershaw Road and authorizing the director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute additional documents necessary to effectuate the contract and to execute necessary documents to revise the schedule of work activities, AR-1736. Bill number 161, introduced by councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a utility agreement with Missouri American Water Company for the relocation and adjustment of utility facilities in connection with the replacement of the Villa Dorado Drive Culvert C-2-416 and authorizing the director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute additional necessary documents, CR-1712. Bill number 162, introduced by councilmember Fitch for councilmember Harder. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with HR Green, Inc. for consulting engineering services in connection with pavement base repairs, resurfacing, ADA compliance improvements, and traffic signal upgrades on Chesterfield Parkway West from Interstate 64 to Clarkson Road and authorizing the director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute additional necessary documents to effectuate the contract and to execute necessary documents to revise the schedule of work activities, AR-1768. Bill number 163, introduced by councilmember Fitch for councilmember Harder. An ordinance amending Title 12 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended traffic code by enacting and adding two new provisions to Schedule 9. Bill number 164, introduced by councilmember Tracus. An ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Nomex, Inc. Project Series 2020 in a principal amount not to exceed $11,500,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive and director of administration to enter into certain agreements and to take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
That was a lot. I hope you have a glass of water or something. Thank you, Lynn. We will proceed with perfection.
You guys, I'm sorry for interrupting, but we didn't read bill number 164. That was 165. I didn't hear bill number 164. I heard you say bill 164, and then you read 165.
Bill number 164 was pulled.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know that.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, if I could have a moment?
Yes, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I think that there's been an error. I believe that 165 was read prematurely. And we may need to hold that on the agenda.
So it wasn't ready to be introduced?
Correct. I mean, I think that it wasn't all, didn't make the out on agenda if I'm not mistaken. I don't know. Perhaps the councillor can weigh in, but I just want to make sure that we cross all Ts and Ds correctly.
Yes. County councillor, would you mind weighing in on that? Would you advise we hold that?
164, what would have been 164, one that was skipped. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I think so.
Yes. I would advise that we would wait to be sure that we have that in correct order so that we make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting so that we don't have any problems with the ordinance.
Okay, so then what was 165 was read as 164, and that is fine as is?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
We should make sure that that is, that's reflected in the journal?
Right. What was in the packet as being read as 164 was skipped, making what would have been 165, 164.
Got it. Okay. All right, we will move on to perfection.
All right. Sorry, Madam Chair, thank you.
Oh, no, appreciate the clarification. That was important.
Bill number 20, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Like to take that up and move to hold bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 5, introduced by councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to hold bill number 5.
Bill number 5 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold bill number 36.
Bill number 36 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 150, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 150.
Second.
Second.
I think I heard a second from Councilman Tracus first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 150 is perfected.
Bill number 151, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
Madam Chair, bill number 151, if enacted into law, would ask the voters of this county to decide on November 3rd if the county council should have oversight authority when states of emergency is declared by the county executive during a pandemic. I wanted to hold it this week to give the members of the council an opportunity to provide any feedback that they may have. So please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 151 is held.
Bill number 152, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
Bill 152 is much like 151, except that if approved by the voters, it would give the county council the same oversight authority for public health orders issued by the director of the Department of Public Health during a pandemic. So for the same reason, I would like to hold this bill this week to give the members of the council an opportunity to provide feedback and members of the public. Please hold.
I move to hold, or bill number 152 is held. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
I move to hold bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 109, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 109.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Sorry. Aye. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on substitute bill number 1 for bill number 109, you have six ayes and one absent.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 109 is finally passed.
Bill number 148, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 148.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill number 148, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 148 is finally passed.
Bill number 149, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of bill number 149, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill number 149, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 149 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have one resolution this evening, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution. Whereas the novel coronavirus known as COVID-19 has created a global health crisis and has had a devastating impact on our community. And whereas Maplewood resident Shayna Jones has endured unimaginable loss during this pandemic, as eight of her family members and friends have passed away due to complications of the coronavirus. including her aunt, uncle, four cousins, a close friend, and a fellow church member whom she considered to be like a second mother. And whereas, even as she grieved those heartbreaking losses and found herself out of work because she is considered high-risk for contracting coronavirus, Shayna chose to focus her energy on helping others in her community. And whereas, each day, initially at her own expense, Shayna stocks two tables outside her home with food and essential household and personal care supplies and allows anyone struggling to make ends meet take what they need. And whereas Shayna's selflessness inspired others in the community to come forward and support her efforts through donations of money and items, including books and games for kids confined to their homes. And whereas Shayna has been a leader in the Maple Good Facebook group whose members have organized, facilitated, and stocked similar grab-and-go tables in their yards. And whereas, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis countyans to pause to honor a member of our community who has channeled her own grief and loss into an extraordinary effort to support her neighbors. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the County Council extends its heartfelt admiration to Shayna Jones for her resilience in the face of great loss as well as its great appreciation for the empathy and kindness she has shown toward others in our community. Section 2, the acting administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Ms. Jones as permanent tokens of the council's esteem and gratitude.
I move for adoption of resolution number 1.
Second, Days.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolution number 1 is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Under unfinished business, item number 1.
Uh, please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 2.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 3, 6th District.
The new liquor license be approved as requested, please.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 4.
Um, hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. New business.
Moving on to new business. Madam Chair, we have five prepared orders this evening. Prepared order number 1, in the matter of donation of a 2020 Hallmark Enclosed Trailer for use by the Police Department.
I move for the adoption of order number 1.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number 1 is adopted.
On prepared order number 2, in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the Collector's 2017 tax sale.
I move for the adoption of order number 2.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number 2 is adopted.
Prepared order number 3, in the matter of contracting for employee health savings account, HSA Services.
I move for the adoption of order number 3.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number 3 is adopted.
Prepared order number 4, in the matter of contracting with Express Scripts, Inc. as pharmacy benefit services provider for county employees' health plan.
I move for the adoption of order number 4.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number 4 is adopted.
And prepared order number 5, in the matter of contracting, contracting with medical benefits providers.
I move for the adoption of order number 5.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Order number 5 is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Any, um, announcements? Comments from the council? We adjourn. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Days.
Second, Tracus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
You as well.